...a nonprofit, nonpartisan membership organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. As a nonpartisan group, the League has never taken a position endorsing a political party or candidate. It is important to be an educated voter, so we thank you for taking the time to learn about the candidates. As a reminder, questions from the candidate forum event were submitted prior to the forum by voters in the Shorewood community. Community, where have we tried to provide questions so we can cover as many topics as possible? For those of you with us here in the room, remind you again to silence your cellphones, and we ask that you do not play out, make comments, or otherwise interrupt the forum. Thanks again for your cooperation. There are three candidates seeking election to the Shorewood School Board and are vying for two positions on the ballot are Emily Berry, Becky Frayer, Andrew Frye. The applicants have chosen to be, the candidates have chosen to be addressed by their first name. And we're going to begin with a two-minute opening statement. By lottery, Andrew Frye is going to vote first with his two-minute opening statement.
Hi, thanks to the Shorewood Women's Club and the League of Women Voters for putting out this forum this afternoon. I'm Andrew Frye, and I want to be your next elected School Board Member in Shorewood. My wife Beth and I chose Shorewood as the place we wanted to raise and educate our three children, three Outwater students, Otto Eaton and Wyden. We were drawn to Shorewood for its great schools, but have found so much more from its great rec. department, welcomeability, and awesome community. As a former teacher and administrator, I've always had an interest in local school matters. I've been a stay-at-home dad since 2012, and we moved to Shorewood in 2016. My bi-weekly night out for some free time was attending the Shorewood School District School Board meetings. I've found many conversations with friends, neighbors, and community members revolve around the school district. These conversations involve the good and the bad that occurs in the district, and what we'd like to see to make improvements for all students. I've never thought about running in an election before, so this is all new to me. But going out into the community and meeting new people and learning about the pride and concerns they have for the Shorewood School District has reiterated my decision to run for School Board. The tagline on my Facebook page is "A Listening Year and Accountable Voice for Shorewood Schools." That is just what I want to do. I want to listen to the students, parents, and other community members, and then be their voices in board discussions and decision-making. My experience as a teacher and administrator combined with being a parent and small business owner of the Torres Strait area by graces give me the communication, problem-solving skills, and different perspective to contribute to a successful School Board. Thanks for taking the time today to listen to my answers and learning more about why I am the right choice for Shorewood School Board.
Next opening statement is by Emily Berry.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the Shorewood Women's Club and League of Women Voters for hosting and moderating today. Thank you to everyone in the audience for your attention to this election. Oh, well, let me start over. Thank you so much to the Shorewood Women's Club and the League of Women Voters for hosting and moderating today. Thank you to everyone in the audience for your attention to this election and the issue we face with the community. And thank you to Andrew Becky for stepping up and being willing to serve on our School Board. As I sat here and listened to the village board candidates speak, it really struck me that events like this are a kind of small wave of democracy, and in a time when democracy is really underbred, both at home and abroad, of course, in Ukraine, my thoughts are with Ukraine. So my name is Emily Berry, and I'm seeking a second term as a Shorewood School Board Member. I have two children in our schools and have lived in Shorewood since 2013. All three of us here at this table care deeply about Shorewood's students, and our schools, and our teachers. If we didn't know it before, the pandemic made crystal clear how important our teachers and schools are to our community's wellbeing. I bring to the table three years of experience starting on this board, maybe the hardest three years of a school district across the country that we've seen in a generation. That experience matters because there are still some major challenges ahead of us at the School Board. There are three big ones that will be easier to navigate if we maximize the level of experience on the board. One is that we must continue our progress for our strategic goals, which all drive toward academic excellence and equity. That work is our bread and butter and has been made more difficult by the pandemic. The second is the major budget shortfall we face next year due to a $0 increase in state aid. Experience will matter when contemplating the path choices ahead. Third, we will need to hire a permanent superintendent to take over when our current superintendent completes her interim appointment. Having been through the hiring process for the interim position and having worked with two superintendents will make it better prepared to lead the next one. As a School Board Member, I strive to put the students first. I will always advocate for teachers to bring progressive values to our board table. Thanks for that opportunity today.
Becky?
Thank you to the Shorewood Women's Club. Thank you to the Shorewood Women's Club, to the League of Women Voters, to all of the guests that are listening in today, and fellow candidates. I am really excited to be here today to share a little bit about myself. I have lived in the Village of Shorewood since 2010, when I moved back after I had a title and wanted to be closer to home. So I'm from Milwaukee, and a little bit about my background is I've always wanted to be a teacher since I've been in the fourth grade, and really had a passion for student success and development, and really looking at other dogs, students who are from diverse backgrounds, with lower socioeconomic status, struggle with health issues, have disabilities, and really believe in students' small backgrounds to be successful. And so when I moved back to the Village, I've worked throughout my career in education, in higher education, with the way we can get equity wins. And now that I'm here in the Village for a number of years and have raised my kids, I have one child who's in an Outwater Elementary School, and another kid who is in Shorewood Intermediate School, who's going to high school next year. And I feel like I have right knowledge of our own community. And though we have a lot of high outcomes, and we are a village of often the most high, I know that we have great equities within our outcomes for student success. And so I think some of my background and experience can lend itself to helping us to really take practical and strategic approaches into helping all of our students be successful. Similar to what we have with candidates that I've shared, I am very concerned about our upcoming budget recalls, and I really want to focus on increasing holiness as well as finding practical solutions to equity. And so I hope that I get to share a little more of all the views today and thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Now we will move to the questions submitted from the Shorewood community. The sign will let you know when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. We will begin with Emily. And the first question is, what do you see as the Shorewood School's greatest strengths? And what are two or three of the most pressing issues for you?
Okay, I understand. Thank you. I think without a doubt that our teaching staff is our greatest strength. And not coincidentally, our teaching staff is the most important aspect of what happens in our families every day. We know that teacher skill and experience is the number one predictor of positive student outcomes, so we know how much that matters. Our teachers also matter because they're our neighbors. I think everyone here knows the teacher lives on their block, and we're blessed to have somebody who live in our community. They continue to be our greatest strength and need to be one of our highest priorities as we look ahead to the tough budget of students we have in the coming year. Ahead of us, I think I mentioned in our opening statement that we have a couple of key strategic priorities. All of those really orient toward academic excellence. And we have the benefit of having already built a framework in how we're going to approach those. One of the things I think a lot of folks in Shorewood know is that we're trying to integrate an equity lens to everything we do. I think that's extremely critical, not only because it's the right thing to do, but because it's the best way to prepare our students for the world after our school.
Excellent.
Becky, you're next.
Thank you. I think our greatest strength in our schools are our students. By far, I have seen, especially over the past couple of years, I have seen such amazing behaviors of courage, such conviction of our students. I think about the summer of 2020 when so many of our students organized a math program test. I think about some of the great accomplishments in arts, in athletics, in academics, and all of the successes they have, and I want to encourage that and broaden that and be a part of the system and a part of the community where we value education so much. And so I think not only our students, but the support around them, including the teachers, administrators, the families, and the community members who live in the Village, businesses. And so our strength is we have a lot of really engaged people in our community. Issues, I've had a lot of dating over the past couple of months. And prior to that, based on my own experience, I would say that our issues. Right now, I have a lot of mistrust at all levels, and I really want to harness that and figure out how we can rebuild trust in our community so we can tackle some of our challenging issues, such as enrollment, really increasing them, and advancing equity initiatives. And so if we don't have trust, we need collaboration, we need accountability, and we need greater transparency. Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, one of our, I think that our greatest strength, like Emily said, our teachers are the backbone of our district. They are there for our students every day. They spend more time with some of us than some of us do with our children. The other part I think is so strong for us, our families and our community members. We have experts in all areas of running a school district, and our families and community members should be valued for that. And I think that when they speak up and their opinions are given, I think that that's a great strength that we have. Some issues that we have, I think that communication within the district has been an issue over the last five or so years that I've been paying attention to the district. I think that there's a lot of talking that goes on, but not enough listening. I don't think that enough people are involved in the decision-making or that their voice is valued. The second issue that I see that's arising is academics. On the state testing, our scores have been going down over the last couple of years. You know, it's a percent here, 2% there, then we're down 10% on proficient students over the last bit. A third issue I think is turnover. Our staff turnover rate has been high over the last couple of years, especially with our African-American teachers. So in order for us to solve the academic issues, I think that we need to have strong teachers who will stay in the district for the long haul.
Thank you. The next question... I'm sorry, I'm just going to briefly interrupt all the candidates. Make sure you hold the mic up close. People are having a little hard time hearing this. Is this okay? Yeah, okay. The next question is number two, and Becky will give that first, and it is, it's a long one. Plan state funding, increased costs, and the recent dividend enrollment mean the district will have to make hard decisions about how to create a balanced budget. What would you prioritize, and where do you see the potential for cuts?
I think with our budget, when we're looking at budgets, is I am going to be thinking about what relates to our co-mission, and that's the success, the academic outcomes of our students. And so when we're looking at all of the line items on a budget, I'm going to want to think about those core initiatives that lend themselves to success. What have been proven to be a means to success? Is it our teachers? Is it our support aides? Are those fundamental resources, are they feeling supported? Do they have the resources they need? Do they have the materials they need and staffing? And so for me, I believe that our budget should be guided by ambition. And if we don't cite that, we're not going to be able to attract and retain the students. And so the other piece of the budget is while we're looking at really honing in, I also want to be committing some attention and some resources into how we market ourselves and collaborate with businesses and community partnerships, to landlords, and to real estate agents, and everybody to try to get a one-page recruitment. How do we get families into our Village? Because we have the boost of holiness. If we don't have the boost of holiness, we're going to continue to have a lot of really tough, difficult conversations in our Village. And I'm really worried that we might start losing some of the things that are core to us. And so not only will I focus on ambition, but also try to increase in holiness.
Andrew, would you like to begin?
No, good, thank you. I think a priority of balancing our budget, like Becky had said, is almost like the touchpoints of the students. Who is there in making the most difference for the students in their learning each day? So I think that making a priority of making sure that those touchpoints, the teachers, the aides, whoever else is in the classroom, is there, and like Becky said, the funding, their program is funded. Another thing I think that we need to look at is redundancies in programming. We need to look and see where we're using consultants, and where we're using staff members, and where we have redundancy in those, you know, consultants and staff members. Where can we do that? I also think that right sizing the staff based on residence enrollment is a step that we're going to have to make forward, just because the way the funding works with the student funding, we don't get as much from open enrollment. And the open enrollment is a great place when we have a seat or two open, but to open up 50 or 60 seats each year, just, you know, kind of hurts us over the long run. Another thing I think that we need to look at is programming and look at the long haul of something like, you know, a program is rented to us for one year. We need to look and see, hey, is this a program that we can support two or three years from now? It could be the greatest thing ever, but if we can't support it, then is it really worth doing the first year?
Emily, is the budget question, would you like it repeated?
Sure.
Okay. Plan state funding, increased costs, and the recent dividend enrollment mean the district will have to make hard decisions about how to create a balanced budget. What would you prioritize, and where would you see the potential for cuts?
I think the first thing we need to acknowledge in response to that question is, I think it's really important that we don't give up on the potential for improved adequate state funding. It's not too late for the state legislature to act and to use part of our $5 million projected state surplus to fund education. If they can do that today, it would be the right thing to do. It wouldn't even use up the entire surplus, it'd make a huge difference to districts, including Shorewood, but across the state. And it's badly needed. The fact that that hasn't happened yet is frustrating to everyone who cares about education. But if we do face what we think we are likely to in the coming year, there is a dramatic shortfall, particularly of inflation. And as we all know, there's a shortage of needs for our students, including the need for mental health services and support. Given all that, I think we're lucky that we don't have to start from scratch when it comes to figuring out what our priorities are. We have a strategic plan. We should stick to that strategic plan. It is anchored by five pillars, starting with academic mastery, character and citizenship, wellness, facilities, and our school staff. We've recently refreshed that strategic plan so that every aspect includes a lens of equity, and I think that's what needs to guide us with budget decisions.
Thank you. Question number three. The district has opened up many more seats to open enrollment this year. What do you see as the pros and cons of increasing open enrollment? And that question goes to Andrew.
I mean, I think that the pros of opening open enrollment is to open up our amazing school district to people who don't have the opportunity to live in Shorewood. I think that that is great. I think a con, though, is the funding that comes along with it. And basing our budgeting and finances based on open enrollment seats in the long run hurts us because we don't have the full funding coming for those students. But I do think that opening up the enrollment to fill in a seat here, a seat there, is a great opportunity for students. But to base our budget or to come up with a small windfall of student funding based off of the open enrollment, I don't think that that is a long-term strategy to help it with our budget.
Okay, Emily?
Sure. For those who maybe don't have children right now in schools, maybe it would help to define open enrollment. Open enrollment is the program that allows parents in any district to apply, have their child attend school in a different public district. So it's different than another program that you both might be familiar with called Chapter 220 that was explicitly meant to integrate urban schools into urban schools. So our open enrollment program, the way that we are making decisions around that today, and that's really guiding our superintendent and business manager, are not to treat the open enrollment as a way to balance our budget. It's a way to offer educational opportunity to students who might not otherwise have that opportunity. We have, continue to have a lengthy waiting list, so it feels like the right thing to do to offer those spots when they're available. That said, as I asked our superintendent, and she explained, we are not creating new sections and classes, but where we have space and we're staying within our class size guidelines, we can offer space to students. So again, it's not a budget balancing tool. That's not how we're using it today. It's a way to fill spots that otherwise might go empty, and, you know, at least it can help provide, sorry, bringing in students from other communities is a good thing for students in Shorewood. Thanks.
Thank you. Now Becky, again, it is, the district has opened up many more seats to open enrollment this year. What do you see as the pros and cons of increasing open enrollment?
I appreciate open enrollment in that it is an opportunity for our students and students in the surrounding communities to go to school together and to benefit from some really great programs. We are known for having really great arts programs. We're known for having high academic achievements. And, you know, if there's spaces available, I want to see all students that are interested in working in the district to have that opportunity. Having said that, I realize that this has to be done within a budgetary context. And so with students in open enrollment, having fewer dollars associated with them than the students who are in the district, it's important that we, under those numbers, open enrollment so that it's not requiring an increase in staffing, and so that we're maximizing the successful use of staffing that we have available. Otherwise, you know, without open enrollment seats, I can see that we would have even more challenges with being able to retain some of those services. So we do have the benefit to our financials, as well as the benefit to our students needing to engage different students from across the community.
Okay, thank you. For the question, we'll go to Emily, and I'm just going to, because it has initials in it, we have lots of those in education. ICS, Integrated Comprehensive Systems. This is, I'm just giving the definition of what ICS is. It's a systems approach to eliminate inequities due to race, ethnicity, social class, ability, gender, and sexual gender identity. And the actual question is, do you support the district's use of the Integrated Comprehensive Systems framework to address equity issues in our schools? If not, why not? If yes, how do you plan to build support and keep the community informed?
Thanks for my question. The work that ICS is supporting in the district is some of the most important and meaningful work happening in our schools. ICS is, again, a group of advisors that is helping us with our strategic plan. It's as simple as that. They haven't offered us a quick solution to systemic problems that we face. They are not even people who will drop in and give us a quick fix, charge us a bunch of money, and then leave. They are helping us make transformational change, and I absolutely support the work that we're doing with them. By way of background, when we got to a point of refreshing our strategic plan to include equity and equity part of our work, we were really looking for expert advisors and who can help us really make systemic change, and so it's the group we chose. As I said, I think this work is really the most important and meaningful work happening in our district. And that's not just because it's the right thing to do. It's about supporting our students' success post-primary education. Districts that have been treated away from equity work are doing a disservice to their students. What we want is to see our students prepared to succeed in a diverse world. That's just part of what makes the ICS work is so important.
I absolutely support it's equity work that is asset-focused, or we believe in the success of students, that's systemic, that's structural. We really critically look at our systems and think about how we can get small feet to get there, how planning programs, maybe that are at nights or evenings that these students can access so they don't live in an area of community that is far away. I believe really thinking through structural things in a very practical way, and I believe in us working together. What I can say is that ICS has been very controversial in our community, and I do think there is an opportunity for us to take a reset and to rethink how we're engaging in the work together. Right now, I'm concerned that maybe, so in my experience, when I've had people telling me things to do, and, you know, when it's my profession and I want to be engaged, I might not feel like I'm being treated as a professional. However, when I'm included in the process and I feel like I'm a part of something, then I'm gonna, then I'm gonna really give my all and want to commit to it. And I really think we need to start with our ICS framework, with our asset mindset as well, where we include all of our teachers, staff, and community members with a framework that we all care about equity, and then we can get together and see how that works in a practical sense. And so that's how I would like ICS to continue forward.
Andrew, you're next, and I'm just going to repeat the question. Do you support the district's use of Integrated Comprehensive Systems framework to address equity issues in our schools? If not, why not? If yes, do you plan to build support and keep the community informed?
I definitely support equity work within the district. I think that is one of the most important things that we have going. I think that we've noticed that over the last couple of years, the inequities within the district. Do I support ICS, yes or no? I don't know if I support ICS as the program that's best to fit our district. And the reason I don't know that is because I haven't learned enough about it. I feel like I'm a pretty informed parent within the district, but I don't think that there's been enough information passed out to us. I don't think that we've been taught, this is what the outcomes will look like. This is what's going to change within the district if we use ICS. So I don't know that I support it or not. I do look forward to learning more. I've heard that we will have some open houses, we'll be able to ask some questions and stuff like that. But I also would like to see some evidence from any contractors that we use, or anything that we use within the district. I'd like to see evidence of success, just so that we can make sure that it is the best fit for our district. I'd like to see, you know, how it's going to fit in our district and what our district will look like after completing it.
Thank you. The next question is question number five. Becky will begin in first. In your opinion, how well is the district currently serving special education students? And what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for special education in the future?
Well, I understand that presently I don't have students with disabilities. To have that really in-depth understanding that some of our parents have, but I have heard from several parents in the district, and they've had a really rough experience in the past couple of years, especially. I understand there's been a lot of turnover in special education, and I understand that there's been some communication challenges in special education. And so as a board member, I would really want to continue mentoring those parents and continue to address and figure out how we can have that program that attracted so many people from all over. I have a neighbor from Ohio who worked here for our special education services. And so it's really disappointing to me to see that we really have some struggles. Now, I do think there's a real opportunity in the future within the district, and that we can reset a vision as a community and get our special education services back on track. I will say, some of the challenges with special education is the needs are so diverse. And so some students maybe have high needs where they're really looking at career vocational living skills. And other students, that maybe it's more related to mental health. Maybe there's a physical limitation. Or maybe there's something where, you know, a student can really be connected and included in the classroom. And I think it's important that we really adapt each student's plans to their specific needs.
Okay, Andrew?
Yeah, I've heard a lot from special ed parents or parents with special ed kids in the district. And unfortunately, I haven't been hearing a lot of good about it. I've, you know, been in meetings, listening to parents who are crying, who are begging for help for their students, and they're not getting, you know, their needs are not being met, they're not being, their IEPs are not being followed. Those are things I hear when I'm out knocking on doors, talking to parents. I've reached out to the district just in support to those parents. Those parents have asked me, hey, will you reach out? I've reached out to the district and I've gotten non-responses from different members of the district, of the administration team in the district. Like Becky said, there's been a lot of turnover. I think it was six out of eight teachers at Lake Bluff last year for the turnover. The lack of consistency for these students, having the same teacher year after year, is huge. We need to work on that. And that goes back to keeping the teachers. It's not a one-size-fits-all classroom, like Becky said. So we need to have those teachers who understand those students because they work with them year after year after year. And I think that, you know, I never know, we've been told that the aides are not qualified to be aides. They've come in and they're getting the qualifications, but they're not coming in qualified. And the turnover for aides has been, you know, too high for those students who need them the most.
Emily, you're next. And it is, in your opinion, how well does the district currently serving special education students? And what do you see as opportunities and challenges for special education in the future?
This is a follow-up question to the one about ICS. We know as a board, as a district, that children receiving special services in our district have not been served as well as they should have been this year. To be clear, that is for reasons that have nothing to do with ICS. And our equity work is really intended to help resolve some of the challenges that we see and to serve every student that are included in those who receive special services. I think it's important to understand that, again, as you mentioned, consistency is really key to quality of services and instruction in special education and in education in general. So one of our challenges in terms of our budget this fall will be reconciling diminishing funds and insufficient reimbursement from the state for special education with the need to barely, to offer competitive compensation to special educators. I won't pretend to have the answer to that question, but I also am not going to pretend that we're doing as well as we could. One of the reasons, again, that I'm so excited about our ICS equity work is that it is oriented toward serving students who receive special services better. We know we have work to do there. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question, Andrew will get first. And it is, how do you think the district should balance student wellness with academic rigor?
I think looking at the students' needs for wellness and then balancing it with the academic rigor, that's a good question. I think that actually reaching out to the students, seeing how they're doing, seeing if there's an alternative way to evaluate the students on what they're, you know, on subject matters. I think that, yeah, I think just talking to the students, having programs in place that students have a comfortable place to go and discuss their needs for wellness is always a way to start with balancing academic rigor and our health for wellness. I don't think that we should lower the rigor and the expectations, but I think that we need to find ways to work with the students so they feel comfortable reaching that rigor.
Okay, Emily, you're next.
Sure. First, not answering the question, I think it's a fallacy to kind of talk about these things as either or. Students who are struggling with their physical or mental health are not going to do well academically. And if they do, it'll be a cost to their health in the long term. It doesn't set them up well for success if we just drive purely toward academic achievement. So that's, I think, that's a shared understanding across our community, which is why wellness is one of the five pillars along with academic excellence under our strategic plan. So we continue to be guided by that need. I referenced earlier that we know that there is a heightened need for mental health services for students right now post-candemic. But that need exists to pre-candemic as well. And I'm proud that we were able to meet that need with a partnership with Wisconsin Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, which has offered onsite mental health services, but also professional development and learning for our district staff so that they can help meet those needs as well for those students who maybe don't need more, don't need face-to-face weekly therapy. So we've been able to meet that need, I think, really well. And I think our district really is led the way. We can always do more. And that doesn't mean that we ever stop striving for academic excellence.
Thank you. Becky, how do you think the district should balance student wellness with academic rigor?
Well, I work in an university. I can tell you that the mental health challenges are real. The suicide test I seen this past year, I've just been off the charts. And so I really feel for our students. And I don't think wellness and rigor aren't necessarily against each other. And I think our professional development, our pedagogy, our curriculum can really reinforce the support of both. I think higher education and higher support are essential. I think, you know, we want to have a classroom where students are comfortable failing and taking risks, where they have grit, and where they put in effort. I was looking at our perception surveys, and I notice our students' percentile rates with effort are kind of low. And so I wonder, I think about my students, when, you know, they're so afraid to try something because they're so used to being perfect, but they don't want to fail. And so I wonder, that pressure, how can we release some of that pressure so students feel the desire to explore and learn? And I think those are some strategies where we take away some of that pressure, we can increase some of that wellness, some of those connections, some of those collaborative learning experiences, and have rigor associated with it. So I don't think they're usually exclusive, and I think we can do both.
Thank you. Emily, you're beginning the seventh question. And I'm going to just, it also involves some technical, not really technical, but a phrase that maybe not everyone knows, steps and lanes. Teacher's pay structure, which allows for increases for years of experience, steps, and advanced degrees, lanes. And the question is, do you believe the steps and lanes teacher compensation structure should continue as we currently have, or should be modified or replaced?
Sure. That's, of course, as a current, whatever question I thought a lot about. So again, steps and lanes is a short and a kind of nickname for our compensation system for teachers. And what that does is allow us to offer predictable raises for teachers based on how long they've been teaching. And also recognition in terms of salary when they earn a master's degree or PhD. So it's a tool that has allowed us to attract some of the best teachers and retain those teachers. Last fall, when this question was in front of the board, I heard from many, many teachers about life decisions that they made based on that predictable salary schedule. As I mentioned before, teacher experience, teacher skill is the number one predictor of student outcomes. So I see this as something that is crucial to our district's future. To be clear, we can achieve any of our strategic goals without highly skilled teachers. So we should make that our top agenda priority. I believe predictable salary schedules and specifically steps and lanes is a system we need to keep. Even if I personally didn't believe that, which I do, we heard loud and clear from our community last fall that that's what they want. And so for that reason, I absolutely support you.
Okay, Becky?
I definitely support steps and lanes. I think it, I was looking at some data, and I found that in the teaching profession, there is a least amount of inequity for gender, race, and other disparities because steps and lanes structures. And I also think that we want to attract and retain high-quality teachers. And I think it's a, it's a method where students or where professionals or teachers can have a structured salary structure where it's not based on performance or other outcomes that can cause people to maybe change their teaching approaches and other things to try to maybe tailor around a system that maybe has other metrics associated with it. So I think the steps and lanes structure, it really rewards people that have been here for a hundred years. And in fact, I can, I would support a step and lane structure for all staff because I understand we're struggling to keep support staff. And so perhaps we can also look at all of our methods and how we're creating systems that allow our professionals to advance and to want to maintain careers here within our village.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yeah, I, in, in aggregate favor of keeping steps and lanes. The reason that I've heard is, you talked about to get rid of it is so that we equal out our employee groups and how each employee groups, we see, you know, raises and such. And like, or like, I'm sorry, like Becky said, like I had said at the school board meeting the other night, I support it for all, for all of our employee groups. When I was an educator, there were students in the school that needed that person to be their person. It didn't matter if it was a teacher, if it was somebody in the, you know, secretary or somebody in the cafeteria, they needed that person. And I think that there is a way that we can create steps and lanes for all of those different employee groups by getting certificates or going back, you know, it's just, it's just designing however we want to design. So I do think that, that we need to do that because the staff is the backbone of the school. They need to be there for our students. We want to have a consistency from one year to the next of that staff so that the next student comes back the next year, they know they can count on that person to be there for them.
Thank you. We have time for one more question. And Becky will get this first question, the first shot at the last question. What do you believe has contributed to the turnover in elementary school principals? And what will you do to provide stability in these important positions? Can you suggest changes in the approach to hiring, mentoring, and evaluating administrators that are new to the district?
Oh, gosh, I think I would really have to talk to the principals to really understand their turnover. And so, gosh, do I really support exit interviews? And hope that our board does that. But we'll say that, and totally, I think that we've had some challenges with our leadership structure prior to Dr. Skirby. And perhaps that is the reason why we struggle to keep principals. I also think it's a lonely position, you're at the top of the school and having to lead and be responsible for so many different competing responsibilities. And being in a district that is small, where you can move to larger districts and maybe increase your salary or increase your bonus. So I think there's a lot of different reasons why a principal might leave. And I think the reason we should be experts is what would make our principals stay? Because, you know, we can't always necessarily fix all the pieces in a small village. But I think we can focus on what makes people stay. And I think our culture, and we need a culture that's supportive, where we're united, where we have collaborations, where we reinforce our educational outcomes, and we support our students, and we celebrate them. And listening and collaborating is going to help our principals stay and make them work here. Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, this is a question that hits home really, to me, I have a daughter who's in second grade, and she's had a different principal every single year she's been at Hatwater. So, I mean, it definitely hits home. And it's funny because she'll be like, oh, I have a different principal this year, I have a different principal. She doesn't know what it's like to have the same person there every year. So I think that, like Becky said, our previous administration, our previous superintendent, I think that, and I heard from people in the community that it was hard to work under his leadership. And so I think that giving more respect to the principals to run their school buildings and giving them a little bit, you know, saying how their buildings are run would be huge. Working with exit interviews to learn what it takes to keep principals would be large. And I think that our school perception surveys, they weren't, you know, just the principals. It wasn't, you know, the specific downed principals. But when we look at the school perception surveys for staff, the satisfaction is not there. You know, they're, they're just not happy in the district. And so I think that looking at those, those surveys, respecting those surveys, and not being like, oh, not enough people answered them, or, you know, we didn't have the right questions. I think that if you're going to have the survey, you have to respect the survey. And I think learn from those surveys why not just the principals are leaving, but why staff in general is leaving.
Emily, I'm going to repeat it. The principles of coherent governance guide the board of ed, no, 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 that's the next one. What do you believe has contributed to the turnover in elementary school principals? And what will you do to provide stability in these important positions? Can you suggest changes in the approach to hiring, mentoring, and evaluating administrators new to the district? Emily?
Sure. I'm glad for this question. Of course, we talked, all three of us, about how important teachers are to our district. But administrator turnover does create challenges for the students specifically. Because it's tied to student outcomes, we know we need to be attentive to it. Being a principal is our job. It is arguably harder in our district where we have very old parents. And we have been for a long time a very teacher-centric district. And sometimes we forget to show our principals love. I think each departure of principals was kind of with our own unique reasons. Some were personal, some were professional. As a board, we need to make sure that we are supporting our administrators and really trying to win a culture where it's not about hitting teachers against administrators. That's an easy pattern to fall into and one that we just need to be aware of and trying to counter at all times. In terms of mentoring, I have to say I'm incredibly grateful about how Dr. Serbia and her interim superintendent role. Her job literally prior to joining us was mentoring administrators. She teaches them how to be better. I am really grateful for her leadership as we, as she looks to guide our current administrative team.
Okay, thank you. We will have time now for 60 seconds for each candidate's closing remarks. And the order of closing remarks will be Andrew, and then Emily, and then Becky. Andrew, you have 60 seconds before you close your remarks.
Yeah, let's take an opportunity again to thank the Women's Club and the League of Women Voters for hosting us today. And I'd like to also thank Emily and Becky for being respectful. I think that, you know, like Emily said earlier, we're, we all, you know, are here for the right reasons. We all want the best for our students and stuff like that. So I would like to, you know, thank them as well. I'd like to thank the community for being out there listening and being concerned about what's happening within our schools. And I look forward to our other two forums that we're going to have with the Ripples and with the Men's Club. If you have any other questions for me, please reach out. My Facebook page or my webpage, you can find me. And I can, you know, talk about school district and my thoughts all day. So, thank you.
Emily?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you to the Women's Club and League of Women Voters. And thanks for everyone who is watching, either live or recorded. I appreciate your attention to the issues that are desert faces, which are big. I mentioned earlier that I really brought home how important our schools are to the health of our community. I'm grateful for that. I think the last three years have been incredibly difficult, but I see that emergence of our schools as really the anchor of our communities. And everyone's shared understanding of our reality is really a gift to our district. Sure, it's always been a lesson for our schools, but that is always I'm sure it's always been a real support of our schools, but that is only heightened. I'm really grateful for it. I mentioned before some of the challenges in front of us, and that I think experience is going to be crucial to beating those challenges, maximizing the level of experience at the table. That's not all I agree, but I'd like to share more. If anyone is interested in talking with me, please reach out and, or look at my website or Facebook page. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Becky?
Thank you so much, again, to the League of Women Voters and the Shorewood Women's Club for hosting this event. Thank you for Andrew and Emily for being such great, what do we call each other, candidates? And thank you to everybody who's watching, and thanks to the students that are in the Ripples, as well as the forums that we have coming up. Similar to what you said, I welcome any conversations about our school district and the opportunity for members of the community. I, I really think that some new faces in the school board could be helpful. I always think new perspectives and new ideas, just like we do from our students, and diversity of ideas are great, and so I support that. And overall, I hope that I'm very well today, and if not, I will see you in the community and I'll enjoy working with you as we help in our schools and our community as best we can. So, thank you.
Thank you all. That concludes the Shorewood School Board Candidate Forum. On behalf of the Shorewood Women's Club and the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County, thank you to the community for your questions, we only got through half of them, and thank you to the candidates participating in the forum and running proposition on the Shorewood Village Board. Thank you to each of the candidates, Emily Berry, Becky Freire, Andrew Frey. As a reminder, the election will be held April 5th. Information on voting and elections can be found at vote411.org, the League of Women's Voting Milwaukee County website, and at myvote.wi.gov. Please visit the vote411.org website to view your sample ballot, information on your candidates, and a detailed question and answer section. Polls are open on April 5th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and with proper documentation, you may still register when you go to vote. The polling location for words one through eight is at the Village Center, and the polling location for words nine to 12 are at the North Shore Presbyterian Church. You may request an absentee ballot until March 16th, and you may cast an in-person absentee ballot at Village Hall or the Village Center from Tuesday, March 22nd through Friday, April 1st by 5:00 p.m. The League of Women Voters reminds you that our democracy depends on citizen involvement. I trust that you all intend to vote at the election on April 5th, and I hope that you will help increase voter turnout by encouraging your friends and family to vote as well. Thank you very much.